Good evening. I am Sharon Breen, President of the League of Women Voters, Minnetonka, Eden Prairie, and Hopkins. I'd like to welcome you on behalf of the League. We are a 104-year-old volunteer nonpartisan organization which encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political party or candidate. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring forums such as this to provide citizens with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face the issues that are important to you. This is a nonpartisan forum, and we ask that campaign buttons or campaign T-shirts not be worn or signs that or literature be distributed in this room. Please also silence your electronic devices. And now, I would like to introduce your moderator for this evening's forum, Deb Brinkman of St. Louis Park and a St. Louis Park League member.
Good evening. Tonight's forum is provided to give you the opportunity to learn about the candidates running for Eden Prairie School Board, their background, motivations, and goals in relationship to the seat that they seek. Candidates will be answering questions submitted in advance or during the forum. To the extent possible, these questions have been reviewed by an impartial committee familiar with the issues. It's our intention in good faith to select questions that represent the interests expressed by the voters, that are focused on the future and not based on hindsight, that are relevant to the office being sought, and are not personal in nature, hostile, embarrassing, or unclear. Questions will be answered to all candidates and may be consolidated or edited. There's never enough time to cover all the issues in a setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed here tonight, please feel free to contact the candidate directly. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. Candidates will be allowed an opening statement with a maximum of one minute. During the question-and-answer period, answers will be limited to one minute. Opening statements will be given in alphabetical order by the office being sought, and questions will be answered in a rotating order. A 15-second warning will be given to the candidates. The candidates will also be given the opportunity for a one-minute closing statement. Candidates, please finish your sentence quickly when you see the stop sign, or you'll be interrupted. We ask that there be no demonstrations in support or in opposition to the candidates or their positions, and that the candidate be allowed their full time to get their points across. Recordings of this event, whether in person or on computer, may not be used without the express written approval of the League. The League will only allow audiovisual of this event to be broadcast its entirety, except by the media reporting on the event. If you have a question, please write it on a three-by-five card available, and one of our volunteers will pick it up when you raise your hand. All candidates were invited to participate in tonight's forum. Candidate Kim Ross has COVID and does not meet the CDC guidelines to be present. She's prepared an opening and closing statement, which will be shared at the appropriate times. Candidate John Sirmack also has COVID but meets CDC guidelines. He's president and seated separately and masked. The remaining candidates are Anne Bradshaw, Kim Johnson, Dennis Stubbs, Jody Ward Renaud. And you will be selecting three candidates in the November election. So we'll begin with the Eden Prairie candidates, giving them their one-minute introductory remarks. First, Anne Bradshaw.
Good evening to my fellow candidates and all the attendees and to our moderators. Really appreciate just being invited here by the League of Women Voters, so thanks for having me. I'm Anne Bradshaw, and I'm seeking a seat on the Eden Prairie School Board. You could say I have a vested interest. My husband Neil and I have five daughters. We have been in Eden Prairie schools for 18 consecutive years and just kicked off our 19th yesterday. Our oldest daughter is in graduate school now. We have two additional daughters in college. All three of them are EP graduates. Our fourth daughter is a junior at Eden Prairie High School, and our fifth daughter just started seventh grade at Central Middle School, so we are all over the board. I'm a licensed CPA. I have a heavy finance focus. I'm an author, passionate volunteer, and I'm running for Eden Prairie School Board to insist that we bring respect back to the halls of Eden Prairie Schools. Respect for each other, respect for your teachers, respect for your elders, respect for volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. And John.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight. My name is John Sirmack. My wife Nikki and I have been residents of Eden Prairie for over 20 years and have two sons who have gone through the public education system here in Eden Prairie, starting in ECFE, then on to Prairie View, CMS, and Eden Prairie High School. My oldest just started his freshman year at the University of Minnesota, and my youngest started his sophomore year this past Tuesday. I was a volunteer head coach in both Eden Prairie baseball and basketball for both of my kids for over 10 years, and I started commissioning rookie camp. Prior to my Eden Prairie coaching work, one example of service that I was extremely proud of was co-founding Minneapolis Hope Dollars for Scholars, which is an organization founded on providing post-secondary educational opportunities for young people regardless of income. Tonight, as I answer questions, I want you, the voters, to understand who I am and what grounds me in my personal life. Three things. I lead with values, specifically mutual respect for others, listening, compromise, and being authentic. I believe and value our public education system, and I seek to apply common sense whenever possible. Hopefully, you'll see these in my answers tonight. Thank you, and I hope I get my vote in the fall.
Thank you, John. And Kim Johnson.
Well, thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting this event tonight, and thank you for all of you that have attended. I'm Kim Johnson, and I'm an Eden Prairie resident for the past 35 years. I am married with three grown children and a grandchild. My children were part of the Eden Prairie School District, and I am a recent college graduate. In the last past 24 years, I have worked in learning development as an instructional designer and a people leader. I am running for school board because I believe in the importance of education and bring a fresh perspective to this role. I am committed to ensuring high-quality and equitable education for every child. Safety in our schools is paramount, and I will prioritize enhancing safety protocols and accountability. I'm dedicated to fostering a strong community through engagement and open communication. I'm dedicated to... Sorry. With my background, dedication, and commitment, I aim to create an environment where every student can thrive. I look forward to earn your support.
Thank you, Kim. And we'll pause now for a statement from Kim Ross, because we're going in alphabetical order, so this is where we'll pause for her opening statement, and that is on the video that will be shared. Just a moment.
Hi. Thanks to the League of Women Voters and to the candidates participating this evening. And I especially want to thank Eden Prairie for the opportunity to serve on the Eden Prairie School Board for these past four years. I'm sorry I can't be with you this evening due to having COVID, but I'll watch the forum and post my answers to the questions posed on my website and on social media. I believe the most important work of the district is ensuring that each student achieves their academic potential. And given the opportunity to continue serving, I'll focus on driving achievement by engaging students in their learning, advocating for the well-being and safety of students and staff, and ensuring that the district is operated in a financially and environmentally sustainable way. Although I have more experience than any candidate, it's about more than just time served. It's about effective leadership and making decisions that enhance the educational experiences and success of each student. You can learn more about me at kimaross.com. I humbly ask for the opportunity to continue serving on the Eden Prairie School Board and for your vote on November 5th. Thanks.
Thank you for playing that video for us. And in one moment, we'll wait for our audiovisual representative to get to the back, then we'll proceed with Dennis Stubbs. Go ahead, Dennis. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank you all for hosting this event and for the opportunity to participate. My name is Dennis Stubbs. I'm the incumbent candidate, and I've been serving on the Eden Prairie School Board now for two years. My wife and I have lived in Eden Prairie for 10 years, and we have three young kids in the Eden Prairie School District. My son's a fifth grader. I have a daughter who's a third grader, and my youngest daughter just started kindergarten. And for one year, they're all going to be in the same building, so... Being on the school board's been a lot of hard work, takes up a lot of time. I've served on the Community Linkage Committee as well as the Board Development Committee. And I'm going for this position again for the same reason that got me elected two years ago. I care a lot about the kids in this community. I've gotten to know so many of them and their parents through coaching, youth groups, school functions, after-school activities. I've made it a point to get out to as many events as possible so that I can be available to parents, teachers, and students in case they want to share something or have any questions, so I'm happy to be with you all here tonight, and thanks again.
Thank you, Dennis. And Jody Ward Renaud.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and thank you to everyone for listening tonight. As I said, I'm Jody Ward Renaud, and I'm a candidate for the School Board for Eden Prairie. I believe that we have a thriving district, amazing resources for our families, phenomenal teachers, and students for whom the sky is the limit. I believe for our district to continue on our upward path, we need board members who will help our district leaders consider policies and practices on a deeper level at every meeting. And I think that we do that by asking questions at the board table while we're considering the policies. A little bit about me taking a step back. I've been living in Eden Prairie for about 12 years. I am married with a fifth-grade son, Ben, at Eagle Heights, and an eighth-grade daughter, Emily, at CMS. I've been deeply involved in our schools that entire time that Emily has been in school. And throughout my involvement in our schools, I've never been shy about advocating for others if I thought that they needed help, and I'm asking for the opportunity to be on the board to continue to advocate for our families at the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Right now, we will proceed with our first question. John, you will be the first person to answer, followed by Kim. And the topic is educational achievement. New data from the Minnesota Department of Education show reading and math scores remain well below pre-pandemic numbers. Eden Prairie schools are doing slightly better than the state averages, but they're still well below the 2019 average scores for math, which was 55%, and reading, which was 59%. Why do you think that is, and what will you do to turn around academic test scores so that the students succeed academically? Again, John Sirmack, please.
Thank you for the question. I think there's a lot of reasons why that's happened. I think COVID definitely had a huge impact, as we all know clearly, that it had a huge impact on our kids. It was a really devastating time, and there was some slipping that occurred during that time. And so I think, to answer the question about why, I think the pandemic had more of an impact than we initially thought. I think that's part of the why. I think the way we're going to fix this, or at least attempt to fix this, is to dig into the data a little bit more. I think we have to really depend on good metrics and measurements to understand where the gaps are and what's happening within those two particularly very important areas. We need to consider cultural awareness when we're doing that. We need to consider the demographics of our students. We need to consider a lot of different things that maybe we don't always think about when we're trying to determine what the problem in something like that is. So I think if we really dig into the why, now that we know the pandemic is clearly over, we can get to the root of some of that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Kim Johnson. Yes, I can repeat that.
Thank you.
New data from the Minnesota Department of Education show reading and math scores remain well below pre-pandemic numbers. Eden Prairie schools are doing slightly better than the state averages, but they're still well below the 2019 average scores, for which math was 55% and reading was 59%. Why do you think this is, and what will you do to turn around academic test scores so that students succeed academically?
Thank you for repeating that question. I agree, looking at the data. Looking at the data will tell us any kind of demographics that might be despairing the reason for that gap. I do believe that COVID did have an impact on our education. I do know that some schools have hired intervention teachers to help fill in that gap, so those individuals that can help fill in those gaps where it's needed. As an example, my daughter is actually one of those individuals that is a teacher, a math teacher, to help fill in those gaps. So I applaud her in that space, and I think that that's an area where we can definitely improve, is really focus in on those individuals that need that area. I believe that Eden Prairie School District has the best teachers in this area, and I know that with that extra attention and detail, they will be able to bridge that gap. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. And Dennis Stubbs.
Okay. One of the things that I've learned in two years on the board, and I keep hearing the word over and over again all the time, and that's each. And they always say, each, 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 each student, each student. This district does an amazing job in just recognizing that, you know, not every kid is going to have the same starting point. And some of them need a little extra help, special treatment, and they go out of their way to get everyone caught up so that we can achieve the same finish point. And that's at graduation, having everyone get there and just be ready for what life brings next. They do a good job recognizing that. I think that's part of the reason why we've done well in grades, and you just hear a lot about that on the district, is no one gets left behind, and that's huge. And I think that's probably what makes the biggest difference, why our scores kind of reflect a little higher than some of the other districts, so thanks.
Thank you, Dennis. And Jody.
So curriculum is set in our district by our wonderful professionals in our district offices, and they are incredibly smart people who have education on how to build curriculum. So what would my role as a school board member be to foster and grow and help students? My role would be twofold. First, like Dennis was saying, we focus on helping each student, and each student learns a unique way, and each family has a unique experience in our district and how they're interacting with the curriculum. So I would be out in the community, talking with families, and finding out how they're experiencing the curriculum, so I could bring that point of view to the board table when I came to a meeting. And second, I would use the board meeting time as an opportunity to ask questions when curriculum is presented to us, to ask, how have we considered how a policy or a practice or curriculum impacts each student, including students that don't fit in the middle of the bell curve? When you're talking about test scores, a lot of times, you're looking at kind of the middle of the bell curve, how you're working with those students. And I want to look at how we're impacting the students that don't fit in that top of the curve.
Thank you, Jody. And Anne Bradshaw.
I think it's my own opinion is that COVID gave our students, especially the younger elementary, way too much freedom that they weren't ready for, to try to succeed on their own. I happen to be home with my kids, and they still had too much freedom. The kids who didn't have parents there witnessing every day because they were trying to do their jobs, unbelievable. So I think kids got used to that. There were so many absences, and then I know children who were using the excuse that, oh, we might have COVID, I think I should stay home. Suddenly, kids weren't attending school five days a week, and I'm familiar with high schoolers who are still saying, oh, wow, I just went to school five days that week. I'm not used to that. That's not acceptable. Our kids need to be in school, and we need to tighten the reins. And I think... I think what's really important, and you're going to learn throughout this evening, I'm kind of an old-school kind of gal, but bring back pencils and paper, because my youngest child seldom uses a pencil and paper. And she's doing math on an iPad. Bringing back pencil and paper is a universal equalizer, and I think that's really going to help bring all these kids together and work with their teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. All right, then, next question. The topic will be vouchers. We're going to start with Kim at this question, and then go to Dennis. The question is, do you support school vouchers? And please state the values for your support, whether or not you support it. Kim Johnson.
Thank you for that question, and I'm going to be totally honest and transparent, but I don't know what school vouchers are. So is there a clarification that I can have?
In my... Somebody else can jump in, but it is providing financial support for children to participate or enroll in students outside of the public school system. Thumbs up, everyone?
Thank you. Thank you. Do I support vouchers? I think that having individuals be able to choose where they want to go to school is very important. If a parent wants to have their child go to a school that is extremely talented, has a great education, I believe that they should have that right to be able to go to those open schools.
Thank you very much. Kim, and we'll go to Dennis.
Yeah, as far as vouchers, I think it's good to allow people to choose where their kids want to go to school, and if vouchers means giving them financial assistance to pick a school they're choosing, that's great. I think this school district has got so much to offer in the things that they do. I mean, I tell people all the time, I wish I could be a kid again and go back to school at Eden Prairie. The amount of programs and things that they do, I learn something new every day on the board. The presentations they put forth, this is an amazing district. I'd hate to see anybody go anywhere else, and we do everything we can to entice people to come in and keep them here. I'm okay with vouchers. I just prefer we keep them here and keep them in our schools, and that, to me, is more important than anything. And we do a great job with that, the team does, and so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Dennis. Jody.
No, I don't support school vouchers. School vouchers take money... With a school voucher, it's money that the state would have had for that pupil, and if they're not in our district, if they take the voucher somewhere else, that's money that comes out of the district that we then, as a district, cannot spend to improve the education for the students remaining in the district. So as a member of the school board, if I were to have the honor to serve, I would focus on listening to the community and the parents who are making choices to leave the district to see what we can do to try and bring them back, to make it so that people aren't looking to use vouchers to leave, similar to what Dennis was saying. I think we have a great district, and I'd love to keep the resources here to help everyone.
Thank you, Jody. Anne Bradshaw.
I agree with a lot of what Jody was saying. I don't have a giant opposition to vouchers, but I feel like there needs to be a good reason behind it. And like you're saying, we need to keep our funds within our district. But at the same time, I attended graduation 2024, and it was a debacle. And when it was over, I looked at my husband and I said, are we really going to send our seventh grader to Eden Prairie High School? And the answer is yes, I want to, but this is our school district, and I'd like all five of my kids to graduate from here. I don't want to open and roll somewhere else. I want to make our school district better. Let's just improve what we have, because we have a great foundation here. So I guess it's a middle ground of if there is a true genuine concern to open and roll, I'm not completely opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. And John.
Excuse me. I agree with this whole group about how great our schools are, and I certainly echo that. What I would say, though, is I do take a little bit of a different approach. I tend to agree with what Jody was saying. I think, as I said in my opening statement, I'm really passionate and see the value in public education with vouchers. You're taking public funds intended for public schools and essentially diverting them into private schools and other institutions, which I don't necessarily think I agree with. I certainly understand the desire for choice, but I also, I think sometimes vouchers seem to treat learning almost like a commodity, and I think it's better to keep public funding in public schools for the purposes of that and not necessarily, again, diverting them. I also don't know, in my research, I've seen a lot of evidence to suggest that school vouchers actually improve school performance either, so I think, you know, if that was the argument, we would certainly, you know, have a conversation. But in general, I think that I would keep the public funding in the public schools.
Thank you, John. All right, then, next question. The topic will be, we've got a couple of different questions on the budget and expenditures. And Dennis, we'll start with you. This question's a little bit long, so bear with me here. Some districts are having to make cuts because of budget concerns from recent legislative mandates made for all Minnesota schools and the expiration of COVID funds. Eden Prairie schools may face a shortfall of $500,000 to pay for unfunded mandates such as unemployment for bus drivers and lunch seasonal workers. What changes would you recommend to make up for the budget shortfall, and how will you be able to accomplish this without larger class sizes or teacher layoffs?
Another thing that I've probably been the most impressed with on this district is the finance team and their ability to balance a budget and not go after more and more taxes. This year, we were one of the only school districts in the entire state that did not levy to the max, meaning we could have asked for more and we didn't. When you have too much money, you tend to waste it. So being on a very tight budget, and I'm by no means a budget expert, but I have learned a lot, and I've read a lot, and I've learned a lot about how things are done in this school district. They're very good at taking what they have and making it work and stretching it as long as they possibly can. And we don't have that position like many of the other districts have. We just gave our teachers a great contract, well taken care of, super important, without having to make those cuts that you're talking about. And financially, I would put this district up against almost every other district in terms of our financial position, and that's all credit to the admin and the business department. Leave it at that.
Thank you, Dennis. Jody.
So it's my understanding that in recent years, the number of administrative roles that we have, both at the district level but in the schools, has increased significantly. And so I think that's one of the areas that I would look at first, is non-teaching administrative roles. If we're looking, if we have to make cuts in that way, looking at why we have those roles and what we could do to consolidate if needed. But I agree with Dennis, there's a lot of smart people, and our district does a really good job. I was a candidate two years ago, and when we were going for the referendum, we do a really good job of stretching our money and finding ways to save money. And so I think there's a lot that we could do on that front as well. But if we need to make cuts, the first place I think I would look is looking at the administrative roles and seeing what we could do there, because we did great with less roles previously.
Thank you, Jody. And Anne.
I think I have a finance background. I have an accounting degree. I'm very budget-oriented, and I think we just look at what funds we already have and what they're going towards, because if the question is, do we spend money on aesthetic changes to a building versus paying unemployment to our bus drivers? To me, that's a no-brainer, and maybe, I'm sure other people feel differently, but I think Eden Prairie is doing a lot of aesthetic updates and changes to the buildings, and perhaps that's where we look to do something differently. Playground equipment is being replaced. That's perfectly good playground equipment, as far as my, again, old-school opinion is. A jungle gym works just fine, and when we're trying to really support our seasonal workers and the unemployment for bus drivers, absolutely. bus drivers, absolutely. So I think we look at where we can not cut corners, but let's think about what are the needs versus what are the wants and weigh those and see what we can do with the budget and stick within those constraints. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. And John.
Well, I was at the school board meeting this year when the annual budget was approved, which was really fascinating. And again, to the point up here, this is an incredibly smart group of people in finance that helped make sure that this district does what it's done, to Dennis's point, for the last several years, and that is to be extremely fiscally responsible, which was really good to see as an outsider looking in and, and understanding the process. But I'll, I'll say, I'll echo some of what was said up here. I mean, I think there's a lot of levers that can be pulled in a budget that size. And so I think, to me, it's a priority exercise where the school board gets together with the other constituents and says, okay, what's important and what isn't? To me, unemployment for seasonal workers, as Ann said, and support for bus drivers, that, that seems to be one of those things that, you know, I would prioritize much higher than other things. And I think like any smart budgetary process, you go line by line and you prioritize what's important and, and what can be put off so that you don't have to sacrifice the things that are most important. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kim.
I'm going to agree with everything that was said here, and I have been watching the school board meetings for the past several nine months. And every time the financial individuals come up to the table to talk about through finance, and it's a lot of information, but they do a really, really good job in dissecting and sharing where that money is going, and they're very transparent to the public. We've passed a referendum, and that means that our public trusts what Eden Prairie is doing with our, with our money. One of the things that I would do in learning and development for our people and culture area that I support, I am part of their budget. And we always go through this exercise of looking at our expenses, 10% cut, what would we have to cut? What's our needs and what is our wants? What do we need to do to run? And then look at our expenses. Where are we, where are some expenses that we can actually cut? And then look, wait, look for ways to actually bring in some revenue within the community and let's partner up. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, again, we'll kind of stick with, with a budget and finance question here. And we will start with Jody on this one. Recently, the Eden Prairie Schools purchased the former Super Value UNFI facility. Please comment on your understanding of the long-range plans for the use of this facility for the educational benefit of our students.
Well, as an outsider looking in, Dennis probably has more information on this than I do, but my understanding is that it's being used for the TASSL program. In addition, I'm on the board of the Foundation for Eden Prairie Schools, and we have an office in there as well. But I also understand there's additional space, and the district is looking for ways that they can use that space for potential community uses, rentals, and other things. So the space, I think, is a space for the district to grow, and there isn't, as my understanding, a complete plan for the entire space. But it's a home for TASSL, which I think is an important program. And if people aren't aware of what TASSL is, definitely something to check out. It's a fantastic program.
Thank you, Jody. And Ann.
I have very limited knowledge about what is happening within that building, other than like what Jody was mentioning. I think my family and myself are very supportive of the special needs program within Eden Prairie High School, and we've been really involved, and my kids have been really involved in it. So knowing that TASSL is getting some attention, a bigger space, and what that can mean to those students is enormous, especially with the sensory limitations that some of the students might experience. And I think whatever can be done to use that space for our students with special needs and their families who are beyond in parenting where I have ever been. So really impressed with that plan and the administrative offices, that's great, but I'm curious what the additional space is going to be and who gets to decide that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. John.
Yeah, I was actually thinking, as you were saying this, that when I think about the strategic plan at Eden Prairie for, for what we want the district to be, it's around authentic personalized learning, wellbeing, inclusion, and belonging. And if we're not doing something that supports one of those goals, should we be doing it? So an answer to your question, getting there, was when we, the fact that we actually purchased this building and that it is dedicated to TASSL, to me, is around the inclusion and belonging piece, and that we're willing, as a district, to invest in something that will provide opportunities and infrastructure and resources for that group of people, which is part of what we say we believe in and part of the foundation of what we're trying to do. So that's my understanding as well to what Jody said, as well as some of the community work. I also was under the impression that it, it also was an opportunity for special needs, as Ann said, as well. So all of those things, to me, have been under the bill of inclusion, belonging. And so I think it's great that we're willing to invest in something that's, you know, was a pretty significant investment.
Thank you, John. And Kim.
I'm actually really excited about the purchase of this new building because if it supports the TASSL program, it is supporting another group of individuals that if my commitment is high quality and equitable education for everybody, inspiring every single student, every single person that comes through the school district, and if TASSL is going to do that and have the expanded location, that is, I am very, very supportive in that. It is also another opportunity to partner with the community and reaching out to other communities and also thinking about our curriculum. Could we expand it even farther to experiential type of learning and give some hands-on practice into a community or a, a public forum like that?
Thank you. And Dennis.
Yeah, I'll be real careful with what I share because I don't want to get in front of the admin and their plans. They like to unveil things themselves a lot. I will say, doing site visits with TASSL, that's such a great program. And if anybody's ever seen the facility, for starters, we were leasing that facility from the city, and it was very small, and we were getting the most out of that space we could get. The city decided that they needed that space back for, for their plans. So then we looked at, do we continue to rent something or do we continue to buy? And if you look at this market post-COVID, commercial real estate, you can pick up for pennies on the dollar. In fact, we got such a good deal on this building, there were folks from Department of Education saying, why are you buying such a big space for so cheap? They would almost rather us get something smaller that costs more. Huge potential here. I've heard millions of ideas. I'm not going to say them. I think you'll find out, but they're really good at planning and there's so much we can do with this space. I've already heard a bunch of them, and I just think it's going to be great. It's probably one of the coolest moves that I've seen take place since I've been on the board, so thanks.
Great. Thank you, Dennis. And the next question, one more question on, on the budget, little bit more of a clarifying question, we'll start with Jody. After recent large expenditures made by the school district without taxpayer input, please explain your views on how the school board can improve transparency and open communication between the board and all stakeholder holders, including taxpayers who do not have children in school? Jody, we'll start with you.
Okay, sorry. I started the last one, that's why I was a little, can you just read that again?
Yes.
Thank you, it was a long question.
It was a long question, and you're right, you did start the next one, so. No, that's okay, we'll start, we'll stick to my grid, please.
Yeah, all right.
Otherwise, I'll really get lost. Okay, after recent large expenditures made by the school district without taxpayer input, please explain your views on how the school board can improve transparency and open communication between the board and all stakeholders, including taxpayers who do not have children in schools?
So I would say that I think that that's a little bit of a two-way street because the communication that front, it's, it's both, the board needs to be more, as transparent as it can be, but I think also the community needs to be involved as well to receive the information. There are reasons, I'm sure, and Dennis, I'm sure can speak more about this, but we just saw, there are reasons why Dennis can't be fully transparent on some things when he's, you know, involved in his board work in order to make sure that the deal is protected or what have you. And so there are certain reasons why he may not be able to speak about what's happening in order to, for the best interests of the district. I will say, I think that what this highlights is that it's important to have members on the board who you trust their values and the way that they look at things, so when there are private matters or, or private deals that need to be done, you trust their decision-making and know that they are focusing on the best interests of the district.
Thank you, Jody. And Dennis?
Yeah, since I've been on the board, there's been very few closed-door sessions where, you know, behind the scenes, and for good reason, we have to go in there and discuss, you know, property acquisitions or projects that, you know, we, we want to, you can't disclose until the details are finalized, I guess. They're good about being transparent as soon as possible, and, and the superintendent and his staff have very good full access, that you can ask them questions all day long about anything, and they're, they're very transparent. Some stuff, for a good reason, is just kind of kept quiet until, until it's approved, and then once it's approved, we make it public. And I've just found that I've had questions on things, especially construction projects and stuff going on in the district, that's my background. They've been very transparent, and I've gotten all the answers that I need. And sometimes when I don't like something, you just have to listen, and I could find something in an email that I don't like when they've done one year of preparation and planning and thought that goes into it. So when you hear the reasoning for making some of the decisions they make, it makes sense, it'll actually change your view on it. But they're very good at, at doing that, and I guess I'm over time, so.
Thank you, Dennis. And Kim.
Can you repeat that question again, just real?
Okay. After recent large expenditures made by the school district without taxpayer input, please explain your views on how the school board can improve transparency and open communication between the board and all stakeholders, including taxpayers who do not have children in schools?
Our parents and our community, they trust the school district. They trust them to do what is right with the dollars and, and the money that they, that they've entrusted into the school district. So when I think about, you know, the transparency, I'm about open communication, creating those channels of, here's what we're doing and here's how we're doing the, here's the resolution for that, and then sharing that when they can, and that makes sense. But having a forum for individuals that they can go to when they want to, and definitely making sure that we're communicating to parents and extended community across the board is really key and important, just to keep everybody knowing what we're doing in the, in the school district. So thank you.
Thank you, Kim. And John.
So not ever having been on a school board before, and, and, you know, obviously Dennis has and understands a little bit more about this as we've discussed, you know, clearly I think we all want transparency, I think we all want to know, you know, where, where dollars and cents are going. What I would say is this, as, as a community member here in Eden Prairie for a long time, I've never seen any history of reckless spending in this, in this district. In fact, we've talked about this already twice, how fiscally responsible that this particular district is compared to the other districts, the school districts in this state. So I had, I have no reason to believe, and I would hope taxpayers within our district would have no reason to believe, that the money that is being spent in this district isn't being spent for the right reasons and, and making sure we have the right resources for the right things. So again, comes down to the trust thing that Kim mentioned, but without knowing the rules and how things can be shared and not shared, I would just say, we have a really good history in this district of how we spend our money, and I, and I believe and trust in that, so thank you.
Thank you, John. And Ann.
I think really important to be transparent, I think everybody agrees with that, you need to set a budget and to have really clear bullet point, line items, that the average homeowner, the average taxpayer can see and understand what's happening. And yes, there's going to be some deals that are not shareable prior to them being made, but seeing where that money might be coming from could be helpful. I think as taxpayers, it's really important, as homeowners, important to attend board meetings or a board meeting to understand what some of the function is, because it's very, very easy to sit in our houses and complain about what's being spent and say that we weren't given the opportunity to understand what was happening, and perhaps in some of the private deals, that information is not going to be given. But I think that our community as a whole, just being better educated by attending more meetings, and myself included, and learning more, there'd be less dissent and a little bit more understanding. And I think, again, the old school, sending paper mailings with budget and line items to people who might not be so internet savvy could be really helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. All right, the next question, we'll switch topics, we'll talk about the curriculum, and Dennis, we'll start with you. Through several years of feedback forums and community meetings, a large portion of feedback has been related to well-researched outdoor time and recess, recess needs. What will you do to ensure the district finally implements changes in response to this feedback? John, or Dennis, excuse me.
Yeah, this one's easy, but I only have a minute. So the first thing on the board development committee that I got on, one of the things that we heard a lot from parents about was screen time, like you mentioned earlier. I've got young kids. I, I understand screen time and being device savvy in high school and, you know, the middle school, but in elementary, there was just too much of it. And that was a huge concern with a lot of parents, especially parents I'm connected with because of the age of my kids in the elementary schools. So, long story short, we spent a lot of time discussing screen time. We developed a piece, we were trying to put it in a policy called protecting human-to-human interaction. We don't want kids staring at an iPad and poking, we want them looking up at teachers, listening and learning. We got a guest speaker from the University of Minnesota to come in and do a presentation in front of the board. We fought really hard to try to get that policy pushed through. It got voted down, but I'm by no means done with that fight. I'm a huge advocate for outside and less screen time and more pen and paper. I was happy to hear you say that. That's been one of the biggest fights, one of the biggest pushes I've done since I've been on the board, so.
Thank you, Dennis. And Kim.
If I understand this correctly, curriculum is set by the superintendent, so the superintendent works with their staff and making sure that they have all of the state requirements. And I know that the school board will take a look at that and, and will work with the superintendent in that, in that space. I think outside time is really super important to add that in, especially in the age-appropriate grades, but I also think it's really important for the older students as well. And I look at adding, do we add experiential learning? And experiential learning is more hands-on. Is it getting up and going places? Does that include the outside time? Does it take a student into a different area so that they can learn at the same time that they're getting up and moving around? So I think that that's really super important. But I trust what our superintendent is doing and what the curriculum looks like, and we would just have oversight on, on making sure that we're asking the right questions.
Thank you. John?
Could you repeat the, the question, please?
Yes. Through years of feedback forums and community meetings, a large portion of the feedback has been related to well-researched outdoor time and recess needs. What will you do to ensure the district finally implements changes in response to that feedback?
Thank you. First of all, I, I echo the group here. I, I think it's an extremely important thing. If COVID taught us anything, way too much time in front of a screen. I, I think technology and being fluent in technology is obviously super important, too, but I also think this bleeds into a lot of other things. Without the ability for our kids to be outside, we have mental health problems, we have a lot of things around just the inability to socially interact with each other as children. I see it all the time within, especially within the middle school and high school years. I think because they spend so much time alone or in front of a screen and not actually socially interacting, which a recess or outdoor curriculum would help provide, we're, we're actually missing out. So I think of this as an opportunity, a giant opportunity for the Eden Prairie School District to do something a little bit different, a little more progressive in how we think about getting our kids away from the screen and outside where they can learn to the skills that they're going to need, more so than what a tablet can teach them. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Ann.
I agree with everybody, outdoor time, very important. Physical activity is really important for these kids, endorphins, just giving positive vibes to these children. I do agree, outdoor time is necessary. I do agree, outdoor time is necessary, we need to follow through with that. We also need outdoor time monitoring, and if it's recess, we need as much supervision as the kids are getting in class. I had experiences, my kid was physically harmed by another girl, and nobody really saw what was happening, and they're interviewing children and trying to take the word of her friends versus the other girl's friends instead of having enough monitoring. So perhaps that's coming back to the budget and the extra administrative help, that we're, are we allocating enough to that help to be able to provide that, a safe environment outdoors? And I think if there are classes, like Kim was alluding to, with actual academic classes that we could include some experiential learning and get the kids outside, and we could include those minutes as part of what's required with the teacher's curriculum, that'd be fantastic in a way to ensure that they're being engaged and monitored and also getting up, getting moving, and getting some fresh air.
Thank you. Thank you, Ann, and Jody?
Like everyone else up here, I agree that more outside time is important, it would be fantastic. In fact, some students need that physical activity in order to be able to concentrate academically on their math and their reading and writing, so I think that's really important. I think as a school board member, it would be my role to ask questions and to advocate for some, a review of what would be possible outdoors. So for example, on the PTO at Eagle Heights, we, our teachers were asking, they wanted to do outdoor time, we wanted to support that, and I had no idea the hoops that you have to jump through and be able to do that. For one, Eagle Heights and Oak Point, that building is so close to the creek and has so little amount of green space, the fields flood at various times during the year, so it's hard to get outdoor time just because of the way the building's set up. In addition, in order to build outdoor spaces, I think there's certain contractors the district has to use as well, and so there are reasons why sometimes things might not move forward, and I think being transparent and having that review would help find solutions.
Thank you, Jody. All right, our next question will be on book bans, and Kim, we will start with you. "As a school board member, you play a crucial role in shaping the educational environment for students. One contentious issue that has recently come up, banning or restricting certain books from school libraries or curriculum. How do you believe the school board should approach challenges such as parental rights related to the selection of books in schools?" Kim?
This is a very interesting and a challenging question all at the same time. I want to be very careful about banning books, because if you start to ban books, then you start to ban the things that you might be totally important to you. But as a school board, I know that other districts have done this, is that you bring the community together, you bring different voices to the table to look at what is in our libraries. We have to trust our librarians, that they're putting the right books on the shelves, age-appropriate, of course, but then if there's something that is questionable, bringing many voices to the table to look at that and say, is this the right thing to do or not, and then make that decision as a school board. But I think that this is not something that just one voice has to be, it has to have a collective response.
Thank you, Kim, and John?
So, I think my, well, I know my opinion on this is a little more black and white. My understanding, unless I'm incorrect, is that in May of this year, the Minnesota Legislature approved a bill prohibiting book bans in public schools and libraries. So, I mean, I think from a legal perspective, that's not something that can be done, but in general, outside of that, I mean, I guess I want voters to know, I'm against that. I think that, you know, in the spirit of making sure we provide access to our students for things that, you know, we may not necessarily agree with, letting the parents be involved, if the child brings something home that the parent has a question about, then they can have that conversation with them at that point. But the idea, in my opinion, of having any sort of, and it sounds like to me the law supports this in Minnesota, I would be against that. So, thank you.
Thank you, John, and Ann?
I am against banning books, and I think my position really comes from being a mom and recognizing that the surest way to ensure a child is not going to read a book, or is going to read a book, is to ban it. As soon as they're told they can't, those kids are all trying to find it online, they're borrowing someone else's copy, they're getting some, who knows what, bootleg copy of the banned book. And so if we don't want them to read certain books, we're also limiting what their knowledge is, what they're understanding, and they're not really necessarily understanding why, yet they're still reading the book. And so instead, let's not ban books, talk to kids about what the issues are, why do we not want them to read this or that? Where did that originate? And it kind of ties into inclusiveness, like what are we trying to keep our kids away from or not understand or not see? So they're going to see it either way, they're going to hear it either way, so let's let them do it with our supervision. Thanks.
Thank you, Ann, and Jody?
I agree with what John said, my understanding is that the Minnesota Legislature passed a law this year that takes that decision away from the school districts as far as banning books, but to answer the question about my views, I would not ban books. I agree with what Ann said, that I think if a student, there's a topic or something that we're concerned about students reading, I think the answer is to have critical conversations and deep conversations. I think that's how students learn, by addressing a topic head-on and having that conversation. And I think banning books is a slippery slope that I don't want to start down.
Thank you, and Dennis?
So, school board's role is not necessarily to get down in the weeds and regulate curriculum and book banning and stuff. I will say, in two years, I have yet to have any email or complaint from anybody ever about any book in a library. I think our district does, the admin team does a good job of screening books and putting appropriate material in there, I have yet to see a complaint. If there was a book in there, I think it does need to be age-appropriate. I'm not for banning books, I think kids are pretty savvy with the internet. I remember this question two years ago, and Isaac, my running opponent, he brought it up, he's like, "Kids are good on the internet, they're going to find it anyways." I just don't think we need to promote it in our libraries, though. That's the thing for me, put it in there, let kids discover, let kids learn, I don't want to see anything promoted. If they want to find it and research it and look into it, that's fine. I don't promote books, and it has to be age-appropriate, by all means, if it's pornographic and young kids are getting their hands on it, and I will do something about it, even though that's not our role, but yeah, I just think there's a certain age limit to everything. I don't want my kids, I don't want it in their hands. As you get older and you want to learn about it, then okay, we don't need to ban it, but let's have discussion about it and go with that.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, we will switch topics now to school safety. John, we'll start with you with this next question. "Each time a tragic school shooting occurs in our country, there are calls for increased safety measures in schools. Are there additional safeguards that are being planned right now, and what actions would you support to be taken by the school board to increase safety in our schools?"
Well, obviously, this is very poignant right now, considering what happened in Georgia, so I appreciate the question. My understanding, and I've seen it firsthand, we have a really, I think, great facilities and safety department that helps keep our schools as safe as they can be. I worry about my children going to school every day, I think all of us have some worry about sending our kids off to school every single day because of what's going on. So from a gun safety or just from a public safety issue like that, I would support, as a school board member, any resource or additional thing that we can do to continue to, unless something on the national stage changes, I would support any resources that would help to ensure we do something more in our schools. And I also think, just in general, and public safety in general, I want to make this point, I had a really good friend who was a student supervisor at CMS, see a lot of interesting things going on from a safety perspective and a violence perspective as well, so this is a super important issue and one that I think should be top priority for all of us. So I guess I'll leave it there, I'm out of time.
Thank you, John, and Ann?
I think in light of the school shooting in Georgia, this is just really at the forefront of so many people's minds, and I think our security within our Eden Prairie schools, our security guards need to actually be given full authority to protect our physical health, our emotional safety. I had an experience at Eden Prairie High School, I was there volunteering, I was carrying a big box of things, and girls were walking down the hall, one turning, chatting with her friend, she happened to crash into me, knocked me off balance, and instead of what I would expect my own daughters to do and saying, "Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry, I didn't mean to bump into you, are you okay?", she cursed at me over and over, and a security guard witnessed, heard it but didn't see, came around, he said, "Who was that?", said, "Can you do something?", and I pointed out which girl it was, and he said, "I can't do anything about her." So until our security guards are able to at least stop actions like that, I feel like we have so far to go. So we need to empower our security teams, we need to beef up our security teams. Thank you.
Thank you, and Jody?
I think I would work on building as much, as many trusting relationships and sense of community in our buildings as absolutely possible. Last year, there was a school shooter threat at CMS, and then that person or somebody posted another threat the next night and said, "Oh, well, we're still on for tomorrow", and there was just a lot of confusion going on, and parents were very scared. And I think there could have been a transparent, like, postmortem done, a debrief on how the district did the best they could do, they did a good job, but how can they do better? Because there was a lot of confusion that was going on. I think it's important to learn from every unfortunate experience that we have. But I also think, as I was trying to figure out, how do I get comfortable sending my daughter to school, there was a fellow parent who said, "I know this principal and I trust her and I feel comfortable", and I reached out to her and said, "I don't have that relationship, but you do, and I trust you, so help me get there." And I think that's helpful, if we as a community can help each other trust and build those relationships, that helps us feel safe when people tell us, "I can't give you the details, but I've done what I can do, and your child can come today."
Thank you, Jody, and Dennis?
This district does a good job in training and preparation with the Eden Prairie Police Department. The way they work together is really impressive, just everyone on the same team, they just completed training, I think, a few weeks ago, they go in an empty school during the summers when no one's there, let everybody know, "Hey, this is going on, don't worry", but anyways, the training is there, there's mechanisms in place that you can't talk about, protocols that you can't talk about, it's not public information, there's a strategy behind that. When something does happen, like a threat or anything, and schools are on lockdown and stuff, we do get debriefs in it, and it is in closed session, can't say what goes on in there, but I will say that they do do a post-analysis, they, what went good, what went well, what did we do good and what did we do wrong? And I know, and I can say one of the things that they are working hard on and they're aware of is communication. Communication during those things is key. Being able to, and they can't communicate everything, there's a lot of privacy issues and stuff that prevents them from doing that, but communication is one of their biggest areas they're working to improve on. Otherwise, the schools are safe, and having inside information, I'm very comfortable sending my kids there, and it's hard because not everybody gets to hear what I get to hear, and you can't actually tell them the behind-the-scenes stuff that's going on. But they are very safe, and they do work very hard post-event in dealing with it and assessing how they, you know, how they handled it, so that was way over the time.
Thank you, Dennis, and Kim?
Safety is one of the most important things that I can see in the school district, and I'm going to come at it in two different ways. We know that we have safety protocols to keep invaders coming into the school, but there's also safety in the classroom. So there's two points that I want to make, is that it is really super important, and I'm glad that we have the education that the teachers are getting, that the security. I have had a situation where there was an emergency, but this was more of a medical emergency, so it's not just what happens to, if there's somebody that comes in and intrudes, but what happens if there's a medical emergency, and how, do the teachers have the, are they equipped to what that protocol is and to keep the rest of the students safe so that the emergency can happen and so that student can be safe? Also, making sure that when things are happening in the school district, I know that, I've heard that there's a lot of violence happening in the hallways, but making sure that we are holding those individuals accountable, those individuals that are jeopardizing the safety and the protocol of our school district.
Thank you. Will, can I have a variation of the safety topic? So this topic will be on student discipline, and Ann, we'll start with you. "Eden Prairie schools are faced with student behavioral issues both in and out of the classroom. What will you do to address student behavior issues so that disruptive students are not infringing on the rights of other students' ability to have an environment conducive to learning?" Conducive to learning, excuse me?
I think I've been clear this evening at least, that bringing respect back into our high school, our elementary school, CMS, it's super important. The teachers need to be able to teach, there needs to be really clear guidelines on what we're expecting from our students and clear consequences. I do see some guidelines, I don't see a lot of consequences, and that's why it's perpetuated. So until we have very clear written handbook, and I have seen changes in the handbook, very much appreciate that, but we need to follow through on consequences, because these kids get a lot of warnings and a lot of slaps on the wrist, and until anyone is seeing consequences, they know that they can kind of get away with whatever they feel like or talk their way around it. So let's have clear expectations, clear consequences, and as a board, I don't think that we're following through on behavioral issues, but I think that we need that trickle-down, we need to demand that of the superintendent, demanding that of the principals, demanding that of the rest of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and next we'll go to Jody?
So as a board, the board doesn't deal directly, like Ann said, with the, you know, behavioral issues in the schools, but the board does oversee the superintendent, and he is responsible for his staff in monitoring safety issues and holding people accountable when there are safety issues. And so I think as a board member, and as a board as a whole, it's the board's job to ask to see incident reports and how incidents were handled and how issues that presented safety issues in the schools were addressed, and then understanding whether those were addressed appropriately, and asking questions, again, it gets back to, that's kind of my theme, asking the questions on what else could we be doing, what else could be done, and making sure that the administration is thinking through all angles and what else they can do, so that our students feel safe in the classroom and can learn.
Thank you, Jody, and Dennis?
So, over the last year, I've said this in lots of meetings over and over again, directly to the superintendent and his staff multiple times, all the great things this district is doing, behavior is casting a shadow on it, putting a scar on it, and I'm like, all the good work you're doing is kind of getting ruined by these behavior problems. It's well-known, I've witnessed it, I've been to homecoming games with my nine-year-old son, I've been to graduation, obviously, but this goes back to the high school and everything else. Behavior, and we've been talking a lot about it in school board meetings as of late, is like the main concern, I've gotten hundreds and hundreds of emails about it, so the community's concern is my concern. It starts with the handbook, and we've been talking a lot about that, we just approved the new handbook, I shouldn't say new, but we've approved the handbook, and the handbook is good the way it is, but it needs to be enforced, and that's the biggest problem. And I don't know if you guys have all seen the Community Linkage article that we put out called "It Takes All of Us". I encourage everyone to read that, we're pushing it hard, we're putting it out there over and over and over again, and we cannot stop talking about behavior in the meetings and pushing that. I've got more to say on that, but I'm out of time. But yeah, that's probably like my main focus right now, is dealing with that and seeing if we can't do a better job.
Thank you, Dennis, and Kim?
Well, like I had mentioned before, safety is really important to me, and especially in the classroom, and it is disruptive to the teacher, and one of the things that we look at, especially when it comes to the teachers, is that they're stressed, they're overwhelmed, and one of those could be that they're focusing so much on the behaviors that are happening in the classroom. And so we do need to have expectations, we do need to have clear consequences and hold people accountable. And when I say about consequences, is that maybe it is about doing community service within the school district. So doing something that will help bring back to the school district and hold those individuals accountable for the things that they have. accountable for the, for the things that they have. Respect is another one. And so making sure that we are, maybe we bring in a group of students and say, "Hey, this is an issue, what do we do? How do we solve this?" And get the students to be accountable for their own actions and hold their peers responsible as well.
Thank you. And John?
Yeah, I would just, I would reiterate my original example of the gentleman friend of my wife and I are close to, he was a student supervisor at CMS. And, you know, I would ask him about his experiences, it's interesting because he would tell me examples of the same children disrupting the halls in different areas the same time every day, not going to class. And I'm like, "How is that possible?" So I go back to the handbook, to Dennis's point, I'm like, reading it and I see that there are policies in place, that, good policies with, with things around, you know, students who engage in violence, the three, the five, the 10-day suspensions, different, different ways that we can, that it sounds like would effectively help the problem, but I think we're lacking is accountability and consistencies in some of the way we do that. So while we seem to have policies in place that we believe in and that we have put in place, are they actually happening? I don't know that they are. So I guess I would focus on more of the accountability and consistency and consequences came up by Ann, I agree. I think if we have consistent policy, we should have consistent consequences regardless of who's doing it to ensure that we nip the problem in the bud, so that's my answer.
Thank you, John. All right, we'll have one more clarifying question that has to do with student discipline and we'll start with you again. And the question is, how can the school board get more, or how would you improve communication and transparency about fighting incidents and other disruptive behaviors occurring in Eden Prairie schools?
Can you repeat that, please?
Yep, we'll just go with the last part. How would you improve communication and transparency about fighting incidents and other disruptive behaviors occurring in Eden Prairie schools? So this is more about the communication piece and transparency, how to be more transparent about the issues that are happening.
Sure. I think there's the issue of student privacy and so, and I'm not understanding maybe the question completely, if we're trying to explain to the school as a whole about what happened with an incident, I think there's a lot of privacy regulations that we can't just share whatever we feel like, but at the same time, when I find out that something went down at CMS, I'm like, "All right, who was it? Let's talk, where are their parents? What's going on?" And so I think, as a parent, of course I want to know, we need to protect kids' personal information, we need to protect their families, but also, this comes back to what the previous question was, which is, let's have clear expectations, let's have clear consequences, let's follow through on them. And I don't care what their race is or what their creed is or what their reason was for knocking out another kid because they just happened to have a bad day. And while mental health hasn't been one of the questions that we've dealt with today, if a kid is struggling, let's figure out what in the world is going on with them and give them that support, but I don't think that transparency with incidents, I don't think that that's really shareable information beyond what the police or health professionals would allow.
Thank you. And John?
One, one thought on this would be, you know, would be that, and I don't even know if this is, if this is legal since I've never been on a school board before, but the idea of just having a student representative that either is not necessarily on the board, but maybe a liaison by campus, right? So we can get actually the firsthand account of what's actually happening in the hallways and actually happening in the classrooms. It's an advocate on behalf of Eagle Heights or Prairie View to say, "Hey, school board, you know, I'm not sure if you know this, and we get, we get all, we get all we want from our kids when they come home and tell us what happened in the hallway or somebody did this or somebody did that, somebody's bullying, somebody's violent." But to actually have an advocate that feels connected to the board or to have even a teacher or staff who has more of a personal connection to the board, I'm not sure how all that would work, but my wheels got turning a little bit about, could we have student representation to say, "I am an actual advocate to the board and I'm going to deliver transparent information on what's actually happening in the hallways." Just a thought.
Thank you, John. And Kim?
It's a very interesting topic to think about and I agree with Ann that there is some confidentiality that needs to protect the student, but I know that in the years that my daughters went to school, if there was anything that ever happened, there was always an instant communication that went out to the parents, there was either an email or there was some type of a notification that was to let us know that, "Hey, an incident happened, we are taking care of it and we will keep individuals informed." But that kept individuals protected and it kept the parents informed that there was an incident. And just making sure that we have those communication protocols in place that is consistent throughout all of the, all of the schools so that we, you know, you know that we're always going to expect to have this type of cadence of communication if something happens.
Thank you. And Dennis?
Yeah, just to kind of continue on with what we've been discussing in the last few months and a year, you hear it all the time, "safe, kind, responsible," and I've been pushing just to add respect and obedience to that. And I'll go back to the handbook again and also "it takes all of us" that we put out there. In the handbook, you'll find the role and responsibility of a student, teacher, staff, school board, parents, people in the community. Everyone plays a part, like, the school district by itself cannot fix a culture and you do have to be culturally aware and I agree with that. And it's good to be, you know, it's good to get down to root causes of why behavior is what it is, but regardless, it can't be disrupting classes, it can't get in the school, it has to be enforced. I don't support expulsions and things like that, but if necessary, then it needs to be done and we don't ever abandon anybody. We will remove and help and I remember saying that two years ago, that's my feeling and it still is, remove and help so that other kids can continue to learn. The behavior has to be controlled and it starts with the staff, the security guards in the school, the admin and just the parents and everybody at home. It really does take an entire group of people and I hope you guys find that piece and read it, I think it's good and we're going to keep putting it out over and over and over again. And that's kind of our mission statement for this year. I know I'm over time, but I will say, I am happy too with the moves that they've made with the admin, with the new principals at the schools, you know, with the way they've sort of restructured. I think this is a new start and a good opportunity for them to get a handle on this right now going forward and we've made that clear in the school board meetings to the superintendent and he's aware of it and so is his staff, like, things are going to be changed this year.
Thank you, Dennis. I know, this was a pretty hot topic, so I think the extra minute or few seconds is acceptable, so sorry, everyone, I hope you're okay with that. Next is Jody.
I could deliver a two-hour-long seminar on this topic. I'm a lawyer, I'm an employment lawyer, but one of the issues that I also cover is privacy. I've been to day-long seminars, legal seminars with legal professionals who work with schools. The privacy rules aren't necessarily as broad as the district necessarily uses them and so I, there is, you can't disclose, FERPA and other things can't disclose identifiable information from students, but there are ways that we can communicate with our community. So when I hear the district say, "We can't tell you anything else, there's a law," that gets to me because I know that there are ways we could figure things out to make people feel safer in the buildings. And so as a board member, I use my expertise and my knowledge on these laws to ask the questions about how do we make people feel safer. The other thing I think would be helpful is if our district had sessions about what these different holds are that the students have during the day. My student will come home and say, "I had a soft hold today and I had to go on Eden Prairie Moms and talk to the other moms about like, what's a soft hold? I didn't know what it was." I think there are ways that the district could communicate with people and with my knowledge, I would love to be at the table. One last thing, the handbooks. I had reached out to the board and the superintendent that the Title IX policy in our handbooks needed to be updated and it didn't get updated in the last round of the handbooks. I would love to have been at the board table to ask the question then about how we could get that updated.
Thank you. All right, the next question that we have, this will actually be our last question this evening and John, we'll start with you for this question. What will you do as a school board member to ensure mental health is being addressed and supported financially in our schools?
I'm glad you asked this question because it's really, really important. It's part of our strategic plan, as I mentioned before, around the well-being piece. I know every building has at one, at least one licensed mental health professional in it, so that's a good start. I think your question was about resources and I think, again, it comes down to how do you prioritize and where do you think it's important, but to me, I think this is, this is an issue across every level, in every school, in every, in every county, in every state across America, it's no different for Eden Prairie and it should be a top priority. So when it's time for budget season again, I think, you know, we would be doing a disservice to the community if we didn't address this. And, you know, you get issues like what happened yesterday in Georgia, that if we don't get a handle on this now and we start to address this with resources, money, people, administration, professionals that can, that can be more visible to our students, we're going to be in a spot that we don't want to be in. So for me, I think it's, when it comes time to priorities and resourcing, if this isn't at the top of the list as a school board member, I would, I would make sure that I, you know, got involved in that conversation, so.
Thank you, John. Kim?
I actually love this question because this isn't just a school district concern, this is an everybody concern. It's even happening in the corporate world, it happens in my world, in learning and development and in the organization that I have. Is this mental health and what are we, what are we doing about it? And it's important to know that it is. Now, I think about this when you're on an airplane and what do they tell you? They tell you to self, to protect yourself first so that you can help those others. We need to equip our teachers so that they know what they need to do to help their students. We need to give them the, the education to identify those triggers, give them, what are the coping mechanisms to help mental health specifically? And then give them the resources and give them the library of all the different places that they need to go to be able to help that. Also align with the parents. If the parents, if we also educate the parents, then they know what it is that they can do to help support the students.
Thank you, Kim. And Dennis?
I know I keep bragging about the district all night, but shout out to the teachers and the staff in our schools. That's another thing where I'm telling my wife all the time, there's so many good things, I wish everybody could see them. I get to see them because we do site visits. To see the staff, and we are well-staffed, to see the one-on-one attention that a lot of these kids are getting from our staff and they do such a great job, just being there and just helping. I've learned a lot about mental health in the last two years, it's not something I claim to be an expert on, but it is a huge concern and it, and it's not just within the schools, it's within, it's, like you said, it's in the entire community, it's everywhere, the workplace. But I love the work that this school district and the staff is doing in that area and I've seen it firsthand in, in every school and just, I mean, I've seen just some areas, the classrooms, just the way they're set up and structured and the, and the relaxed environment to where these kids are just being able to communicate and stuff, so I like what I've seen and I know I need to learn a lot more about it and I know that everybody's working hard on it too, so.
Thank you. And Jody?
I think that helping with mental health is a community-wide solution. I think it's, it's everyone looking out for their neighbor as, so as, since I'm on the Eagle Heights PTO, we have a president's council where all of the PTOs meet and it's a topic that comes up, I'd say almost every month. And the Eden Prairie High School PTO actually brought in NAMI, which the National Association for Mental Health, I don't remember exactly what that stands for, but NAMI. And they did a presentation because parents are concerned about that and they're looking for resources. Friends are concerned about their friends and they're looking for resources. Our teachers are wonderful and they're amazing, but it's a lot to put on them to recognize everything and so we all need to help out. I would love to find ways that our district could partner with other organizations that have expertise in mental health so that we can bring in resources for anyone who wants to learn more about it.
Thank you, Jody. And Ann?
I think this is another place where we could reassess the budget and identify that this is an absolute need versus some of the wants that end up on the budget in some of the line items. So if we can reallocate some funds in future years to increase our mental health advisors within the schools, I think that would be huge. And I think anyone dealing with mental health issues, it can be debilitating and I feel like they're sometimes illegitimized by kids who want to claim, "I can't go to school today because I'm struggling with anxiety," if they're not, because now they know that that, they can just use it as an excuse. Well, this is real for so many kids and for teachers and for families. And so if someone is struggling with mental health, let's have a clear protocol so teachers know exactly who to go to, let's get these kids talking to their counselors and also follow-up. And I think parents too, because parents, some parents I am familiar with will call in and, "My child is struggling today with," and whatever they decide to throw out. Well, for those kids who are truly struggling, I think that really illegitimizes their feelings and their struggles. I think if this is not already in place, an anonymous communication line for kids who know their peers are struggling, I can think of kids that I'm familiar with, that I would love to know who I could talk to, to get these kids some help, so. Just a few ideas, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. All right, now we will proceed to our closing remarks. What we'll do is we'll reverse the order that we did for the opening remarks, we'll still take time for Kim Ross's closing statement and she will be third. So we'll start now with Jody for your closing statement. One minute, please.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. Thank you to the fellow candidates and thank you to everyone who's listening tonight. As I reflect on what we've talked about tonight, we talked about several different topics, but I think the theme that runs through pretty much all of the questions is, how do we know that we can trust you as a board member and that we can trust in what our district's doing? I think trust is one of the most important issues and I, I think that you can, I'm asking for your trust and I'm asking for you to learn more about me based on my history in the district. I've been involved since my daughter was in kindergarten and she's in eighth grade now. I have never shied away from advocating for students if I've seen a need, even if it doesn't involve my own students, I tend to do that. But I also, I ask if you know me and you support me, please reach out to other people who may not know me and help them if they trust you, trust me. Share your experiences because I think it's important, as I learned through my CMS friend, that's how you build those relationships, is working together. So I hope to earn your vote. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Dennis?
I didn't prepare a closing statement, but something I just want to share with everyone, just being on the school board two years ago, I didn't quite know what the scope of work was, but my two favorite things, and I tell this to people a lot, is they're like, "Dennis, what school are you going to pick on opening day?" Going to Prairie View Elementary, first day of school, I'm watching the kindergartners run in. It was the coolest thing I've ever seen, just the excitement on those kids' face. And then at Oak Point, there was a little boy crying, just scared. I'm like, "Hey bud, I'll help you, I'm lost too, I don't know my way around this building." Helping him in his classroom, that was like one of the coolest memories. And then on the back end of that, like, "Hey, you got to be at graduation and you hand out diplomas." I didn't even know school board directors did that at the time, but being able to see the back end of it, the look on those kids' face, like, mission accomplished. To me, that's just what it's all about. And if there's anything I can do to help make that happen and just help these kids along the way, is that my two favorite parts about being on the school board and, yeah, just leave it at that. It's, it's something I'm proud to be on and I'm just happy to be able to help. You guys, thank you all for stepping up and being here tonight too. It's for a good cause, I can say that.
Thank you, Dennis. And now we'll go to Kim Ross's prepared statement, closing statement. One moment, please.
Thanks to the League of Women Voters and again, my apologies for not being there this evening. Hearing the questions asked has helped me to understand what is top of mind for Eden Prairie residents and I'll post my answers on my website and social media in the coming days. Although we have made much progress, there is still work to be done. be done. The impacts of the pandemic on student achievement and well-being are still a challenge, and we need to continue the work that has made Eden Prairie a top district in the state of Minnesota. I've lived in Eden Prairie for 40 years. My daughter is a 2019 graduate, and I have more experience than any candidate or current board member. You can learn more about me at kimaross.com. I'd be honored to continue serving on the Eden Prairie School Board and humbly ask for your vote on November 5th. Thanks.
Thank you. And we'll proceed in just a moment. We'll wait for the screen to change. All right, Kim. Kim Johnson.
Thank you, everyone, for your interest in joining us today, and thank you for the Women's League of Vote-overs for hosting this event. I'm here today to earn your vote. I bring a fresh perspective and a strong dedication to education. When I decided to run for school board, I knew that there was going to be a learning curve for me. I am up for the commitment to serve you, the students, and the staff. This is my time to give back to the community that has served me, and I'm dedicated to serving our community and helping our schools become the best place to learn and work. I am committed to offering a high-quality and equitable education for every student. Safety is a top priority. Open communication and community engagement are also vital to building trust and unity within our district. With my background in learning and development, I bring a unique set of skills that allows me to be different and have a different point of view. I am committed to creating an environment where every student can thrive. Together, we can make a lasting impact on our school and our community, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. John?
Well, again, thank you to the League of Women Voters. This has been a lot of fun, and to my fellow candidates, this has been a really interesting experience for me. I want to just say this, as sort of my close here, I realize for all of you watching, like, who you elect to your school board is a really big deal, and that's not lost on me. And I also realize, I'm new to this process. I've never run for public office before. But I can tell you two things. If I'm elected, I'll make the best interest of every child within the Eden Prairie School system my top priority. And two, if I'm, when I vote on an issue or if I'm providing input on a topic, I promise I'll lean into the values I talked about earlier, so you got my mutual respect for others, the trust, the compromise, and the listening. And I realize, this is hard work. And hard work is good work, and there are a lot of important and pressing issues we need to solve now, and things we don't even know about, that are going to come up later. And I'm in it for the long haul. So, I care about this community, I care about the future of all of our kids, I'm ready to serve, and I hope I earn your vote, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, John. And Ann?
As I've said already tonight, I am an accountant by trade. I deal with facts and evidence. I'm direct, I'm honest, and I'm transparent. If there's a budget, let's follow it. If there's a spending cap or any other kind of limit, let's respect it. What we should be exceeding is respect. Let's set new expectations for respect and challenge all the students and the teachers and parents to exceed that. What an amazing limit to exceed. So, bring respect back to our schools, teach kids what it's like to respect their elders. I think some kids aren't hearing that at home, and it's huge. That's an old-school value. I think most of us in this room grew up with that, respect your elders. And I think that could go a long way in helping with education inside the classrooms, out on the playground. Our kids need that. I think it's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. This concludes the Eden Prairie School Board Candidate Forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank the candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and for being willing to serve our community. Also, thank you to the League of Women Voters volunteers, our audience here tonight, and those viewing this event virtually, for your participation in this candidate forum. Thank you to the League of Women Voters Eden Prairie, excuse me, thank you to the Eden Prairie city staff for supporting this event, and Eden Prairie's broadcast provider for broadcasting live, live streaming, and recording tonight's forum. On-demand viewing can be accessed at lvwpa.org. For additional election information, we encourage you to visit vote411.org, the League of Women Voters award-winning one-stop shop where voters can register to vote, find their polling place, and learn how candidates stand on issues. Please remember to vote on November 5th, and the election by absentee or in person. Again, remember, you'll be voting for three candidates. Your vote is your voice. Early voting begins September 9. The League of Women Voters welcomes both men and women. Please consider joining us. This ends our candidate forum. Thank you, good night. And audience, please join me in thanking the candidates with an applause.
Thanks, everyone. Great job.